All right, it is six oh four. So let's begin this meeting, Dr. Head. Do you have any special guests tonight?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Jamie Swinerton from the Houston Chronicle. There's Jamie right there, so welcome. And Jim Kane, Dr. Jim Kane, the former superintendent of Klein is here. Welcome, Jim. And I want to introduce Jose Rivera. Where is Jose? Hey, Jose, how are you? Who is with Aldine Greenspoint YMCA, and he wants to speak about Lone Star College or Houston North, right?
Um.
One of those, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Greenspoint and Victory. Thank you, thank you, Dr. Head.
That's Houston North, just so you'll know.
Yes, Houston North region, yes, yes. Yes, thank you for having me here today. My name's Jose Rivera. I'm the executive director at the Aldine Greenspoint YMCA. I've been in the community for quite a while, working at the Y. I work at Baker Ripley. And just really excited to be working in this community and being partners with Lone Star College. I'm actually here today to recognize the Greenspoint staff and especially Dr. Wright and Lone Star College overall for the continued partnership that we've had with Lone Star over the years and especially rejuvenation with Dr. Wright. So Dr. Wright serves on our board and also has been really active. Anytime you need somebody in the community, Dr. Wright has been there to roll up his sleeves, whether it's to do Operation Backpack or to engage in the community overall along with the staff. You know, we just had the great dinner, thank you guys for that. And, you know, I got to talk to some of your staff, Dr. Wright, and, you know, the passion and the the investment in this community is quite commendable. So I wanted to just take a moment and recognize on behalf of the Aldine Greenspoint YMCA, Dr. Wright and Lone Star College as a community champion. And we're happy we're getting, we get to work with you guys and the continued partnership and the service that Lone Star does for the community. I can say personally, I'm a product of a community college back in Florida. And these opportunities in creating equitable representation and spaces for our youth is important. Not only youth, but for all ages, because as we were talking earlier, learning is, there's no age limit for that. So thank you for having me here, and I'd like to give this to Dr. Wright. And the staff.
Can we take a picture with the board?
Well, no, we want you in the picture, Jose.
May I, may I, Mr. Chair? The, Jose has been our friend. I just wanted to mention that because I was just talking to Dr. Napolos a second ago about, you know, the East Aldine campus and how, I think he mentioned ten years in the making. And I know you were there. I know when he was with the, with Neighborhood Centers, which is now Baker Ripley. And I went to a lot of those meetings that you were hosting. And your efforts to bring us, to bring the community behind what was going on there at the East Aldine Town Center. I know you, you were all over the place, so thank you for being part of that, okay? Sure.
New recognitions? Okay, so now the approval of minutes, correct? Workshops. So now trustees, let us approve the minutes for the August first workshop and regular meeting. I think Mr. Trustee Lloyd, you were absent last time, yes. So may I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
Second.
It's being moved and properly second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's been adopted. Do we have any special reports or announcements?
So we have a couple of updates. One is, we just received notice this week that, this week, Helen? We put it up here for you to see that we are ranked number one in the nation in the number of Hispanic students enrolled into your colleges. So I'm very proud of that. I don't have the exact number. We will send it to you, but, you know, we've ranked pretty high before, but it's actually pretty cool. We're doing what we're supposed to be doing. And so let me talk to you about enrollments just for a minute before we go to the next item. So we're pretty flat in enrollments. And we're seeing this, so we're actually down in headcount, but we're up in credit hours and contact hours, which is what we get reimbursed for, and that's, that's our source of revenue. I sent out a note to the other college presidents and chancellors in the area. The only college that's really up is College of the Mainland. Everybody else is in about the same boat we are. They're down one percent in actual headcount and up one percent in contact hours, credit hours. So that means that more students, or fewer students are coming to school. Not many, but fewer are coming to school, but they're taking more classes, which is, that's a good thing. And that, what we generally think is that's a reflection of the community right now, of the economy right now, that we have near full employment here in the region. So we're monitoring that. We, our projection for the board was two point five percent. So we're about one point three as of this morning, which we mean, we will make budget adjustments. We're going to wait until the official day, which is next week sometime. And then after that, we'll make budget adjustments of probably, right now, about seven hundred thousand dollars, which is one half of one percent of our total budget, is less than one half of one percent. So we're fine with that. It was that, we could see the trend coming probably six weeks ago, so we were ready for that. And we've got enough flexibility in our budget to handle that. So the next item I have is Houston North officially opened this past week with twenty-three hundred and fifty-seven students, taking over fourteen thousand credit hours. That's a lot of work. Thank you for everybody at Houston North. Jose, you actually helped me to think about this. So Houston North is actually a combination of Victory, Greenspoint, Fairbanks, and soon to be Frawbrook, right? That's what we call Houston, the Houston North, as opposed to North Harris, right? The, we have a dedication for LSC North Harris East Aldine Center next Friday. And I, this is it right here? Your information is here? It is a fabulous facility. You're going to like it when you see it. So it is really nice. And so we've got a lot of work to do over there, but it's in a neighborhood that I think we're going to do some real good with. And so it's well needed over there. And thanks again, Jose, for your help. And lastly, we had, well, look at, let me hit, before I do this last one. On September the seventeenth and twenty-fifth, don't forget that we have a special meeting for the approval of the tax rate. September the seventeenth and September the twenty-fifth. And those meetings will be very short, but we have to have the quorum there to approve the tax rate. So the last thing I have on my list is, on Tuesday, we hosted Texas Land Commissioner George P. Bush for a tour of the Process Technology Center over in Atascoceta. So Dr. Smith was there, Alton Smith, and Mike Sullivan was there, and Catherine was there, and I was there. And we have just a very brief video. He was there for two hours, two and a half hours, yeah. And he actually got out in that hundred degree weather we had and climbed up on the, climbed up the ladder, and he's very personable. So. So what we did was, we gave him an overview of the college, because he's not, he's really not familiar with community colleges and the scope and size and what we do. So it was a, I, we enjoyed having him there, and I was glad that he sought us out to come visit. And thank you, Catherine, and your, your staff over there. So it went really, really well, so that's it.
Yes, I don't know how to call you Chairman Smith is what was starting to come out of my mouth, because that's what I've been thinking all day, so.
You can just call me Miriam.
Miriam. Dr. Head and members of the board, it's my pleasure to present tonight on behalf of the presidents briefly about a slight change, a significant change we made to our performance funding model, Funding Model 2.0. This is tied to one of the top priorities, the financial responsibility and accountability priority, as that is crucial to our operations, as you all deal with all the time. But wanted to just briefly tell you how we do this at Lone Star and how it aligns with the state. So as you know, as board members, there's basically three sources of funding for the college taxes tuition. And then through the state of Texas, our core operations, contact hour reimbursement, student success points. What we'll be focusing on tonight is mostly the student success points. And the way it works from the state is, once the core operations are funded, the remaining dollars are split between contact hour reimbursement and the student success points. Right now, student success points is about ten percent of that funding. So it's not unusual in other states that a hundred percent of performance, of funding this performance funding. But in Texas right now, it's only about ten percent, but it's an important piece of what we do. And we're very supportive of student success points and performance funding. So this model was actually established for the state in 2013 and implemented into the 2014-15 biennium in about eleven different categories. I'll show you here in just a minute. And what happens is, the total success points every college in Texas of the fifty districts generates over a three-year average. That's how they determine this funding for performance funding. What we've been fortunate to do at Lone Star that's unique is that we have, in addition to the way we're allocated based on our size and our contact hours, the numbers of students, et cetera, the opportunity to earn additional funding to incentivize our student success efforts. And that's through performance funding and through growth. Again, we're focused on performance funding tonight. Growth money is available if we grow. If we don't grow, then that money obviously is not awarded, so we sit on that. But the performance piece gives those that if we're not growing away to earn additional funding. In our original model, there were eight indicators that this was based on. We used this model for two years, but realized that adjustments needed to be made and how we defined these indicators and how we measured them. So we put a task force together with Dr. Head's approval, and we did that. We developed Funding Model 2.0. And our goal in that work, our goals, were to align more with the way the state of Texas does student success points, address African-American student success, include faculty diversity, hiring, and then just create the most equitable model possible for all of the colleges. So we've been working on that, and we accomplished that. So the way the performance funding model breaks down is about sixty percent is based on success points, twenty percent student success initiative, and then the faculty diversity initiative. And so we were able to work through the summer and identify how we can better align with the, with the state's success points. There's five hundred thousand dollars total, as you saw on a previous slide, for this funding. Three hundred thousand goes to these success points. We calculate the points, what each one is worth according to the state, the percentage, and then we spread that three hundred thousand dollars out based on that percentage. Then we, not me, lots of really smart people do all this calculation in the back to determine how each of our colleges contributed to the total. And then that amount is distributed to the colleges or allocated in that way. Let me give you just a quick example, because it's a little complex. So this next one just took one of the indicators, which is attain fifteen hours of college credit. The total that Lone Star earned in this measurement period was nineteen thousand eight hundred and nine points. And then you see the distribution, how each of our campuses contributed to that nineteen thousand and what percentage we contributed. So then that percentage helps determine how much of that indicator we'd be funded for. And so that's calculated for all eleven indicators. For the student success initiative, it's the same indicators, but we identified four special ones that we're really focused on. And this is related to African-American student success. A hundred thousand dollars is allocated to these in these four areas. There's four, so we just spread it out, twenty-five thousand dollars each. Here's another quick example. Also, the attained fifteen hours of college credit. You can see the total points, how each college contributed to the total points, and then the percentage of their contribution. And then finally, the third piece of this, the faculty diversity initiative. We decided that the most equitable approach was to take our, calculate our annual hires from a certain time period, as you can see here, and then determine the college's percentage of hires of color, of color, and then the top four colleges split the hundred thousand. And we've been able to implement this through robust hiring processes and pilots on how we can ensure parity from application to the selection of the final candidate. And that's been the goal, to always hire the best person, but to attain parity along the way. So this was the first time this was included in our performance funding model 2.0. And you can see here, each college's total annual hires for faculty, full-time faculty, the number of hires of color, the percentage, and then the top four colleges with the highest percentage earned the twenty-five thousand. You put all of that together, and then there is an amount that you can see for the success points, African-American student success, faculty diversity, and the amount for each college. So we're very fortunate in this, because these dollar amounts become part of our permanent funding allocation that allows us to invest in other student success strategies. And so we're very, very fortunate to be able to work towards this. But speaking on behalf of all of our colleges and our, my colleagues, we do appreciate the opportunity to earn the funding. But as you can tell from these pictures, we just really do it because it's the right thing to do, is to serve our students. So with that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them, otherwise we'll move on. Yes, Linda?
Could we go back a slide or two?
Uh huh.
That one right there. Why is North Harris?
You're missing North Harris, thank you, I meant to mention that. You noticed that North Harris was included in all of the other data points. So they definitely did well and had high success numbers. This was tied to the reallocation with Houston North, and so their performance funding was not an eligibility this year. And then you'll notice Houston North is not on here. As we move forward, I'm sure they'll be, be added. Did I answer that right?
No. Well, we were, because of the declining enrollments, we had already made the decision to reduce the North Harris budget by three million dollars. So it didn't make sense to, we weren't going to reduce their budget, then turn around and give them money. We just factored it all in there. That's my fault for not putting it in there, because the CFO and somebody else asked me, did not want to put it in there, probably Helen. I said, I don't think so, we'll just leave it out of there. But, so we weren't going to reduce them, but then turn around and give them money, or give them money and then take it away again.
Okay, but I'm seeing two different criteria. So their funding was reduced because of falling enrollment, but then they also could not earn success or performance-based funds with what they did with the students they had?
That is correct. We had a choice of, we would either give them, we could reduce their budget by three million, or we could reduce it by three point one and still take money. What we're trying to do is that North Harris per capita expenditures were about three thousand, when the other colleges are twenty-four hundred, if you just do it in a kind of a basic formula. So we're trying to get North Harris, and that's because of the declining enrollments. The, with the students, the number of students dropping, their budget hasn't been dropping proportionally. I'd be glad to talk to you after the meeting if you want to.
Yeah, that's good.
So, that's good, thank you.
We have a presentation of faculty senate presidents.
Vice Chair Saldivar, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Head, members of Lone Star College Administration, campus presidents, why did I get nervous that quickly? Fellow Faculty Senate Presidents and everyone here, good evening. I stood here one year ago, September fourth, two thousand eighteen. Why do I know? Because I went through my files on my computer and realized I was here last year. And we talked about Kingwood one year later, after Harvey. Hopefully, we didn't make the board, you know, have angst when Kingwood would come to the podium to only talk about Harvey. But what I do want to say is that I appreciate the leadership that was displayed during that time in restoring Kingwood. So the board's approval of the funding to help Kingwood get back on their feet, Chancellor Head and his work with the capital, state capital, and the steady leadership of Catherine Pearson, our president, to get Kingwood back where it needs to, where it is, which is better than ever. And I would like to give you all a round of applause, if you'd let me. So this is potentially my last time presenting before the board, as I'm, everybody knows the date that I have in mind. The chancellor is well aware of it as well. But what I, what I have tried to do as Faculty Senate President is to, to look at where the common points are with everyone who is a part of this Lone Star College system. So I want to spend a little bit of time talking about instructional support and how instructional support and faculty work together to provide the best learning experience for our students here. So the great basketball player, probably the greatest of all, not probably, the greatest basketball player of all time said, talent wins games, but teamwork wins championships. And so I believe that Lone Star College is a very team-oriented organization. Without teamwork, we cannot make the dream work. So talking with instructional design, I got some data points that they had presented. And so when we look at what instructional design, which is basically the people who help faculty, you know, we're, we're smart, we are really intelligent, but sometimes we need a little bit of help to get that observable learning objective out. And so this is where instructional design is very, very vital, to helping us to create those lessons that help to connect with our students. And so we see what our instructional designers do. They spend a lot of time in tech support. Yes, D2L, the fantastic learning management system that we all work with. Sometimes we need a little bit of help with that. And so our instructional designers are helping us with that. They're helping us with course design as well, the learned, the instructional design techniques, pedagogical excellence, so that we are able to present these fantastic lessons so that our students get the best learning experience. And you'll hear me say this a few times through my presentation, the best learning experience. One thing that you'll notice about the time that they spend too is in meetings and professional development. And so they're not just telling us anything that they think. They work really hard to make sure that what they provide us as faculty is great information that we can apply to our classes. Another thing is that the modality of online learning is growing so much. And so it's a really good thing to know that Lone Star College faculty are online certified. The college has a program that allows us as faculty to, to go through the process of learning the LMS that we're working in and being able to make great decisions in terms of the lessons that we present to our students so that they perform well in class and have the best learning experience. And so instructional support allows us the opportunity to do that. And as you can see, seventeen hundred faculty are online certified. And so that's one place that we can rest assured that instruction is at least being told the Lone Star way to teach. As we look at support, we have the VTAC, which is the Virtual Teaching Assistance Center. And they provide on-demand support for us as faculty. So as we go through our LMS work and we're, we're looking at articles, you can see seventy-three articles with two thousand views. So we're using these resources as faculty to actually help us to make adjustments in our class our class and to make the learning experience great as well. Moving away from instructional design for a little bit, professional development is also a big part of instructional support. It's not just good enough that we have degrees and we've been credentialed by Lone Star College to teach, but it's also good that we continue to develop, not only as content experts, but in our instruction, in our pedagogy, and things that we can do as faculty, in being mindful of the students that we have. And so you'll find professional development programming that is offered at just about every single campus that we have at Lone Star College. And all of these are intended to help faculty to be better equipped instructors, because it's not just about the chemistry, the physics, and the biology, but it's also about connecting with human students, soft skills. And so professional development is a part of that process. And so we also allow faculty fellows. And so some of this programming also allows us as faculty to help our faculty in the culture that we create as instructors as well. So as I close my presentation, I wanted it to be short and sweet. I just wanted to mention the names of the instructional support leaders that we have on our campuses, and I also wanted to make mention of the instructional design support that we have on our campuses. And thank Dr. Eric Nathan for the information that he gave me. And what is the championship? The championship is our students. The championship is the student that can come to the podium and say they came from China and went to Lone Star College, and Lone Star College put them one step closer to their dream. It's that single parent who is depending on this degree to get them the promotion. And so we take this very seriously, that we can educate students. And so even though we might be talented, we'll only win a game, but we can win championships when we all work together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Board members, do you have any comments or reports that you would like to share? Helen, do we have any citizen? No?
Okay.
Well, that's easy for me, right? All right. Trustees, let's consider the consent agenda. We will, is it item number two, right? So we will consider item number two separately. So let us consider the consent agenda. We have a motion to, first and second, to approve items one, three, two, 16. I have a motion, second.
Second.
Okay, so it has been moved and properly second to adopt items one, three, to 16. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. All right, so this is item number two, which is the tax rate. So, say this right.
Yeah, so in Jennifer's absence, I am going to give you the overview before we do, before we make the motion.
After that.
I'm going to go through the overview before we make the motion, correct? Okay. So if we could put that up on the, okay. I don't have control of the thing. If this is your first time visit here, I'm not Jennifer Mott. She's the CFO, and she had, her children had an open house tonight, so she's doing what she should be doing. So, this is, I want to talk to you about the proposed tax rate, which is the same as it was last year. And you can see that we have it broken down between maintenance and operation and interest in sinking. And again, the rates are the same. So we're 10, 0.1078. These are the, again, the highlights of this. And this is pretty standard, again, for, I've got another slide in here. So our tax rate is actually less now than it was in 2005. Again, assessed value has gone up, but I just want to point out that, so we've, for the board, that we've posted everything that we should have posted. And remember, we've got the approval on September the 17th and September the 25th, and we'll send out more reminders on that. So the interest in sinking, just for everybody else's sake, is what we pay on our debt, and that's a little over 60 million a year, right, Tammy? 61 or 62 million a year on our debt? So when we do our tax rate, there's two separate accounts there. This, the M&amp;O is what we pay for operations, and the interest in sinking is what we pay for our bond indebtedness. So this is what it looks like in the last couple of years, and especially for new board members, so you can see what the ups and downs that we've had, mostly ups for us, by the way, but it's just something we pay close attention to in future years. So the decisions we make today, we've got to be cognizant of what might happen in the future, so we pay close attention to the economy. So our appraised values are broken down, about 75% of it comes from Harris County, and the remainder comes from Montgomery and San Jacinto County. And we have a very small assessed value in San Jacinto County. So you can see how it's broken down here. Our assessed value this year was, went up 6.6%. That's about 2.5 in new property, something like, is that, about right? Okay. So this is, again, the, you've seen this before in some of our budget presentations, but this is what we've done in the last 15 years. So in the last five years, we've actually lowered the tax rate three times, and very few entities can say that, by the way. And again, you can look over there all the way to 2005, so we've been very physically responsible, I think. You can see the trend in the state, by the way, has been going up. We are considerably below what the state average is. Most of that has to do with where we're located. So remember that our goal is to even out what the students pay and local taxes, and you can see where we're going to be, only because our enrollments were about the same as they were last year. We still have a ways to go over that. I think you'll start seeing some changes as the tuition rates go up. Property tax revenues, you can see on, from the assessed value, what the tax rate is and how much money we have from property tax revenues, which is 250 million this year, something like that. And about, so that means that out of our budget, that's the 42% of our budget. This is where we are compared to everyone else. So what's going to be happening is, over the next couple of years, that yellow line where we are right now will be drifting back toward the middle. That's the goal, so that we get closer. We'll be moving back toward the state median in the next couple of years, but that's just going to take a while, depends on what our enrollments are. And if we continue to grow, then assessed value continues to grow also, I mean, if the area continues to grow. But we are headed to the left there. So this is the adoption calendar that we've mentioned before. Just, again, we'll send out some reminders over this, but, so the first public hearing is on the 17th, the second is on the 25th, and then we will approve to, we will approve the tax rate on, in the next meeting on October the 3rd. So, that's the recap.
Thank you. So, board members, I move to propose the maintenance and operations add valor rate of 0.08 per 100 valuation for the 2019 tax year to be adopted at the October 3rd, 2019 regular board meeting. And two public hearings to be held at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, September 17th, and Wednesday, September 25th. So if adopted as proposed, the total add valorum tax rate for the Lone Star College will remain the same at 0.1078 per 100 valuation. Can I hear a motion? Can I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, so can I take a roll call for vote, starting with?
Yay.
Aye.
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 All right. So it has been adopted.
Passed, the motion passed.
Passed, the motion passed. Is there anything else? So just to make, just for the audience to make sure, this is just, we voted to propose a tax rate, but we're actually going to vote for it in October. Do we have any, do we have a financial report?
So I'm going to give that also, just in case the business office is wondering. Jennifer just sent me a note saying she was on her way back. I said, "We'll be over by the time you get back." But, so, board, this is our regular report. There's nothing new here, and we're in good shape. And if you have any specific questions, Tammy is here, but Tammy Cortez. But the trends, we're trending very favorably here. Remember, this is through July the 31st. So we do not actually close out this budget. You'll get the final budget update for 2019 in November, at the November board meeting, something like that. So you can see, though, that we are, I think we're in really good shape this year. I've gone through this a couple of times with Jennifer, but I'll show you some other numbers here in just a minute. Our trend, 1617 is the anomaly, but, and keep in mind, when you look at that chart, that big, the way it shoots up there, you have to look at the other side and see the percentages are not that far off, but the trend normally is in the 90s, mid 90s. Same thing here, I think that we're in, again, we're in good shape. And, again, take out 1718 because of Harvey. So, right now, we are projecting the, well, you can see there for yourself that what we're projecting right now is 16%. We actually think we're going to be a little higher than that at the end of the year. So we're managing our money very well. I have to tell you, though, the presidents and the vice chancellors, thank you for not, we just don't spend any money unless we have to. We have money budgeted, but if you don't, if we don't need it all, then we don't spend it. And when we, we make budgets adjustments, we make budget adjustments based on our enrollment. So we project at a 2.5. If we don't do 2.5, if we only do 1.3, then we make the budget adjustments. And we had meetings today to talk about how that's going to occur. So, again, we are forecast, we are on our target, and I, we believe that when the final, when the final numbers come in, that we're going to be above 16%. And you can see what she is projecting right here, that we're going to be about 9.4 million in net revenues below our budget. So, anything, I think that's, well, this is the financial statement, but the net expenditures, you can see that right there, but we're going to end up with a surplus this year. Anything, Tammy, that needs to be added or?
So I do know that our cash reserves dollar amount, as of August 31st, is right around 66 million. So we are going to end the year with the cash reserves higher than what we forecasted.
Any questions or, so, okay, thank you all for managing the money. It's really, I'm very proud of the work we do, because we're very conscientious about where we are in the perception, in your role and our role, and managing the money the way it should be managed. So that's, that's it.
Thank you, guys, for managing the money. I need to hire you guys to manage my budget. Do we have any building reports or construction updates?
No.
No? Do we have colleagues, do we have anything, any future agenda items that you would like to add? No? So before we adjourn, I just want to make sure and invite everybody to the ribbon-cutting ceremony Friday the 13th. Sounds very odd, that Friday the 13th. So, at the East Aldine Campus. So want to make sure, if you have time, to please stop by. The folks there are extremely happy that we're going to have a campus there, so they're really, really glad. And secondly, I would like to thank Dr. Wright. I actually saw your interview with Deborah Duncan. Can you just tell us just a little bit about it, just for those folks that weren't able to see you on live TV? Come here? Sorry about that.
So I was fortunate to be interviewed by Deborah Duncan right before President Trump interrupted everyone with the announcement. So we got a chance to talk about Houston North and all the things that we're trying to do. And what was great about the event is that it became a Lone Star College Day, because right afterwards, we had someone from the Chief School of Cosmetology, one of our students who gave a great demonstration. So it was really good publicity for the college and for everything that we're trying to do.
Thank you, Dr. Wright, thank you. You are awesome. Anything else? All right, thank you so much, and good evening. Adorn.